Thank you, Margot. Thank you, John. Let's open up the regular meeting of March 28, 2023. We call the meeting to order at 6:32. The first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on March 14, and two special meetings, one held on March 13th and one held on March 22nd.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on March 14, and the special meetings stated March 13th and March 22nd.
I'm not going to second because I wasn't here on the 13th.
Okay, I'll second.
So just.
Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Audience of citizens, we have no citizens here. Three of them are two residents. What can we answer for?
Well, we're all citizens.
Quick question. The March 22 special meeting was for our performance?
Yes.
Okay. Would you be discussing that tonight? Or could you?
That's going to come in front of the Board of Finance tonight.
Okay, so you'll be summarizing or discussing what came from that meeting?
Absolutely, yep. Absolutely, nope. That was exactly what that was for. We had meant to do, to get to that at the previous selectmen's meeting, but that meeting was running long. We had Board of Finance coming in, so we held it on the 22nd.
Oh, right, I apologize.
Yep, and then we, anything that we moved forward, we'll put in front of Board of Finance tonight.
Can I make a motion to add, talk about the Chester?
Yeah, thank you. Yep. I'd really like to talk with you and add to the agenda, an amendment to the agreement between the towns of Chester and Deep River to provide limited bulky waste disposal. Right now, Chester, we have a contract.
Do you want me to second the motion? Add that to the agenda?
Yep, great.
Aye.
Thank you. Let's put that last after next. First, the next thing on the agenda is appointments. We have another citizen who would like to, resident who would like to become a member of the Inland Conservation and Inland Wetlands Commission, Emily Joanne Nelson. I had a nice conversation with her. She sounds like she's going to fit right into the thinking of what that commission should be doing. So I'm happy to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to put Emily Joanne Nelson to the Conservation of Inland Wetlands Commission, term to expire 12/1/2024.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next up, Mayor Road. Approval of Road discontinuance. We talked about this a couple of weeks ago, maybe a month ago. Attorney has given us a confirmation of road discontinuance that needs, a resolution really, that needs to go to the Board, to town meeting. If we can move this tonight to a town meeting, we probably put it on the next town meeting and then get this, gets out of the way at the same time as we will, something else that we could have put on the agenda tonight, we can maybe talk about if we have time. It could be on the next town meeting. This really, all it does is, well, I'll read it to you. Be it resolved by the Board of Selectmen at the town of Deep River that a section of highway shown on a map entitled "Deep River Map" showing the location of a section of highway to be abandoned on Mayor Road, which shall revert to the town as per Section 13A-43, 1963. Supplement to the general statutes, Connecticut State Highway Department approved on October 18, 1966, Howard S. Ives State Highway Commissioner, abandonment filed by Certified Mail, October 16, 1966. Which maps are on file in the Deep River Town Clerk's Offices, Maps Number 75 and 76. This highway was abandoned by the state in connection to the realignment of Route 145 and is shown thereon between indicators abandonment begins and abandonment ends on said map. Shall hereafter be discontinued by the town of Deep River effective on the day of this resolution as approved by a vote of the town meeting. By statute, as a result of these approvals by the town, ownership of the property will revert to the budding owners, which on information and belief will be the Connecticut Baptist Convention and Besheret LLC. That's the motion. This, just as a bit of background, we talked about it before. This was the old Route 145 section. When they straightened out Route 145, this section was abandoned to the town. Town took ownership but never used it as a roadway. It was really just used as access to the two properties. This just takes it out of our hands. It's now going to just go to the two people on either side, the Baptist Church and the Besheret LLC. If we can pass this tonight, we'll move, pass this resolution tonight. We'll just move it to town meeting at our next opportunity.
I make a motion to adopt the declaration as read into the minutes and to present it to the, to town meeting for vote.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Next up is a discussion and possible action regarding installation of little free libraries. This is all, all these libraries will be sponsored by the Friends of the Deep River Public Library. We received a letter a couple of weeks ago from the Friends of the Library that they would like to install little free libraries. Jim, you and your wife were involved in one down at the Plattewood Park.
With the two, one at Plattewood Park and one at Historical Society.
Yep. They want to put one at Veterans Green, one at Deep River Landing, one at Keyboard Park, one at Tri-Town Youth Services, or the Fountain Hill Cemetery, Devitts Field, and Winthrop Circle. Where they put at the Winthrop Circle, they're talking about the property that hosts now a Pizza Grande right just south of the circle. It used to be Wade's.
Never heard of called Winthrop Circle.
No.
No, me neither.
No, I'm saying Circle.
Where's that?
So, the Fountain Hill Cemetery and Winthrop Circle are both private properties, so we have to communicate with those groups, whether they were interested in having them or not. I love the idea that the little libraries are nice, unique, neat, and I think they get used. I think they're on a plattewood anyway. I know it does.
I see a few cars at that one.
Yeah. So I like, I think it's a good idea. I'm not sure, my own feeling, I'll express it, I guess, before you guys. I'm not sure, you know, we have one at the Historical Society. I'm not sure that we need one at the Green. You know, it's just the boom, boom.
Devitts Field.
Devitts Field. Might be good down by the, down by the, by the restrooms and the snack shack and stuff. I'm not sure. You know, but I don't know. It seems like we're kind of ganging them up. And just my thinking is that they're going to get a little crowded if they're around like that.
Well, I think Devitts Field would probably be a good one because there's a lot of action down there. You know, mommy's going down watching her kids play baseball or softball, they can go grab a book. Even though it's close to Historical Society, at least they can get out of the car and go grab a book. The Green, there's really not place to park unless you're parking Adams and walk across the street. I'd rather see one down at the ball field than...
I think the drive-up aspect of it is the convenience factor. Are they gonna, if there's one X place and like you said, you have to park at Adams and walk across the street to get one, you can just pull up with your car someplace and you get out. And I think that makes it a little easier, especially if you have kids in the car or whatever, you know, so. I think that's a great idea.
No, I do too. I do too. I don't want to, I don't know the right terminology for it, but I'm reluctant to just put one every 500 feet. But I do like, I like the Devitt Field. I think it's a good idea, both parks would have one. Deep River Landing, I think, would be a good spot for one too. Certainly a lot of action down there.
The private property ones, we don't have any say in that, so they would have to, they would have to address the private property themselves, I would say.
That's what I would suggest, isn't talking to Fountain Hill Cemetery. Tri-Town Youth Services, it's a good spot. It's town-owned, so we don't have to go through the process. It is close to, close to the school. Most of the folks, I don't know how much that parking lot gets utilized, other than by teachers and the folks that are working there, but you know, I know that a lot of folks go in for the, Social Services is also housed there, so there might be some traffic there. I think, I don't know, what I would think is maybe we just say, let's go ahead with the Landing.
Devitts.
Devitts. And maybe Keyboard Park.
What's Keyboard Park?
Keyboard Park is down here up by the gazebo, yeah.
Don't be, you know.
Amazing, people walking down.
Right by, right by the library, but you know, that's, it's going to be open 24 hours.
Yeah. You know, you get senior citizens from current comrades and whatnot walking, so.
I would, why don't we, why don't we see how that goes? We'll go with those three, and if they want to put them on private property, they're going to go.
Well, that's the thing, they just address that with the property owner.
Yep.
You don't want to discourage the Friends of the Library, but you don't want to flood it every 100 yards just another book drop, you know?
Yep. No, I think that works out pretty nicely. So, I don't know that we have to take any action other than say that these are on town property, so we probably should take a vote and say, let's give that, you know, authorize them if they're inclined to. We'll talk about final location with them, but.
Yeah, the final location, that'd be worked out with the guys whether it be this off of DOT.
Well, Park and Rec will talk about.
And all that.
Yep. All right, so we'll, we'll say, we'll go ahead with these three. But at Deep River Landing, at Keyboard Park, and at Devitts Field. But we will like to have continued communication with Parks and Rec and the library, or the town and the library about where they'll specifically land.
Okay.
Okay.
You need a motion you want to do?
Yep.
I make a motion that we, for the Friends of the Deep River Library, approve three locations. The exact location to be determined, but Deep River Landing, Keyboard Park, and Devitts Field.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks. Next up is tax refunds from the tax collector. This month, we've only got one refund for a total of $52.99. So if we can get a motion, that was just for an overpayment.
I make a motion to approve the tax refund, one tax refund in the amount of $52.99.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next up, just added to the agenda, the agreement between the towns of Chester and Deep River. For many years, we've had an agreement that Chester can share our bulky waste. As part of that, they were allowed, the contract actually stated right up until now that they were allowed to utilize, to bring brush to the town, to the transfer station, unless the town was no longer allowed to burn brush. I don't know how long it's been since we were allowed to burn brush, but it's a pretty long time.
Twenty years.
But Chester has been continuing until the last few years. We've been able to put that and get, hopefully get the residents of Chester to understand. The first selectman of Chester, first selectwoman Charlene has been getting quite a bit of requests to request to us that we renew that, and they will be happy to take on any additional costs that that might incur. What we agreed on, and what this agreement states, this proposed agreement states $30,000, which is, just covers the additional chipping. I think it would double the amount of chipping that we would have to do, so that would cover the additional chipping that would have to take place up there. What this doesn't cover is additional expense of maintaining with the additional traffic coming down there. So I'm going to, I'm going to ask that, if we decide that we want to go forward with this, I'd like to add that, make that $35,000, not $30,000. That additional $5,000 will bring us down there. We're going to have to keep that, keep that thing managed. Other than that, it's the same contract, except for that change of language that this last paragraph, this additional paragraph here, it reads in white paper. Chester residents may bring chippable brush up to three inches in diameter to be deposited as instructed by the attendant. Deep River's contract may have all such brush from both towns chipped and hauled away. Chester agrees to pay half of the contractor for that service plus a percentage for administration of the service overhead. So that's where that additional cost will go. $30,000.
My only concern was, like we talked about last week, was if we have a severe storm and they bring a lot more bulk in it. And I know you said, you know, we did well on a big storm because we got more money from the state. Well, that's not a guarantee.
No, it's not a guarantee.
So that'd be on my, you know, hopefully we don't have any big storms, but if.
No, we will.
No, if we get one, all of a sudden, now we have to do two extra.
Yep. I thought a little about that. If we have to do additional grindings, there will be additional cost.
Okay.
That cost will be shared by them.
As long as it's spelled out.
And that will be, Deep River will invoice Chester for any additional amount due for administration. So I think we're okay if we move this. If you guys are okay with it, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Let's move it to town.
Tell me, okay.
Yeah, this has to, I didn't, I wasn't sure because we had already had a contract, but we're amending the contract. It's on town property, so I think it's, it's just prudent for us to go to town meeting and see what happens.
I'll make a motion to allow Chester to renew its contract to bring in chippable brush at the dump for a fee of $35,000.
I second that motion.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any thoughts? All those in favor?
Aye.
I didn't think about this until just a minute ago, but we are moving to town meeting. I'd like to add to the agenda a conversation about the property of Missick Drive. I spoke with the attorney. As we discussed, so let's, if we can add that to the agenda. If I can get a motion to add it.
Make a motion to add to the agenda the discussion on the Missick Road property for sale.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Is it just going to be discussion?
No, possible action.
Oh, discussion and possible action.
We have a, our options are to list the property ourselves or to hire an intern, to hire a real estate agent. What I'd like to do is go to RFP for a real estate agent so that they can advertise the property, they can show the property, they can put all of that together to sell, to sell the property. We'll negotiate a fee, whatever that fee is going to be. And then, and then go through the sealed bid process with a minimum bid of, I think it's going to be $100,000, which is what the assessor's.
Well, that's what I was going to say. What's the, what's the assessed value of the property?
Assessor has cleared out $100,000. So in order to go through that process, I believe that we actually, I think we have to go to town meeting and wait for the beginning just to tell the process. So we're going to go to RFP for a real estate agent. We're going to move the, move the property for sale with a sealed bid process with a minimum bid of $100,000, and a high bid will be that. Anybody that purchases property is going to be aware through the real estate agent of what the zoning regulates. They're going to have to comply with all zoning and all that kind of thing. The real estate agent can take care of the existing mapping. They can put all that together. I think, while it will cost us a little bit of money, whatever that percentage is going to be.
Yeah.
I hate to give anything away.
No, I know, so do I.
I'm cheap.
Yep.
So do I. It will be, we will ensure that it is sold properly.
Right.
Yeah.
And the Ts and the Is and all that.
It's a lot of work to sell a real estate. So I think it's probably the best way to go. If you guys have any thoughts, please bring them up.
I think it's just best to move it along as soon as we can and get it, get it off the, off the agenda.
Yeah. Again, I, I would like to, at the time we make that motion, I'd like to put something in, in the motion that goes to the town that, that, any, any money that is made from that, at least a portion of that money, go into a fund for other incubator-type projects. Maybe not be specific, but at least that specific, that it go to some incubator-type sponsor project to assist new businesses in their process of getting started.
I'd like to make a motion to bring to a town meeting to advertise from RFP for the sale of the property at Missick Drive.
I second that motion.
Any other thoughts?
No, I think, like I said, I think it's best that it's just get it overdone with and whoever gets it, it's taxable, there's money.
Yep.
You know, it's, it's all, it's all good.
Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anything else? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, everyone. This is the March 2023 regular meeting of the Deep River Board of Finance. First item on our agenda is the approval of minutes. Approval of last February, not last. February is Board of Finance and three workshops. Would anyone make a motion to approve those things?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those who, I always get confused here. All those in favor of moving forward, voting, or discussing? I always get confused. All right, here we go. Oh, you want to discuss? No? Okay. All those in favor of accepting the meetings? Exactly, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. The first item on our agenda is Kristen Brown, who, I'm going to give you the proper title. Actually, you're going to give your proper title, but you work for Waste Zero. Waste Zero, is that it? Does it have a corporation or anything after that? No, just Waste Zero. Right for a zero. All right, and you're going to give us, although I shouldn't take what you're going to do, you're going to give us an update on the town's scrap food program.
Food scrap program. So should I stand this roof, or do I scoot my chair?
Whatever we like. Would you, would you like?
You sit here, you sit right here. You sit right here, that's all right.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Table.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Board of Selectmen, and also by our committee. Thank you for having me today. I want to give you an update on the food scrap collection program going on at your transfer station. And I want to, I'm going to pass out, I don't have a slide projector, but I'll pass out some, some of your results. Just to start off, my name again is Kristen Brown. I work for Waste Zero. Waste Zero is a consultant to the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, and we're working with all of the 18 communities that have been provided a grant to look at waste reduction initiatives across the state. As of now, about eight of them, soon to be nine programs have started. You all started at the beginning of February. So we have one full month of results and a couple of extra strabular months. But so far, you're doing great. You're number one, obviously, everybody, as far as your diversion rate, so that's great. But the reason for this initiative, in case everybody is unaware, is there is a waste crisis that you have here in Connecticut. It's not really just about Connecticut. I'll show you a quick slide. It really is sort of happening across the United States. The reason for it is because right now, when we generate trash and it doesn't go to the recycling, it ends up either in a landfill or at a waste-to-energy facility. In Connecticut, you have four remaining waste-to-energy facilities. Mira was your fifth facility, but it just recently closed. About a third of the trash in the state went to Mira. So now that that third of the trash is no longer going to that facility, it's kind of, it's homeless. Most of it is getting exported out of the state, which is, you know, really costly because you have to ship it to Pennsylvania or Ohio. And because that facility closed, along with many others, especially in New England that have closed, there's a crunch on capacity. So when we throw the trash away, we need a place for it to go. In the United States, in 1990, there were 6,000 landfills. Today, there are just over 1,000. So whenever a landfill closes, it's not necessarily the case that a new one opens. They close because they're full. There's no more land or no more space in that particular area to continue to open a new cell for the landfill, so they end up closing. It's really hard to, hard to site a new landfill. And I'm sure you can understand why, especially as a Board of Selectmen. Somebody came to you and said, we want to put a landfill in Deep River. Everybody would be like, we're not Deep River. How about a neighbor? And nobody wants to have a landfill in their town. Similarly, with waste-to-energy facilities, we started out in the 1990s, late 80s. There were about 75 waste-to-energy facilities built. 75 or 80. Today, since 1992, the only one that's been built has been in Florida. So there's only been one added waste-to-energy facility. They generally have a 30- to 40-year life. So if you go back 1990 to now, they're all elderly. So they're all old. So we're, we are sort of facing an issue here. It's hard to cite another waste-to-energy facility. Again, you wouldn't want one in Deep River. So it's, it's, you know, it's not just New England that has a crisis. It really is the entire United States. Now, what we're doing about it is similar to what they've done in Europe because Europe tends to be about 30 years ahead of us. They look at materials differently. They call it materials management. So they move as much from the waste stream, out of the waste stream, and turn it into other products like recycling. That creates jobs. It uses less energy, costs less money overall. The other thing that they've done a lot of in Europe is they move the food waste out of the waste stream and they turn that into energy. It's a cleaner process than waste-to-energy facilities. But the trick is, how do you separate the food waste from the waste stream? Because people are used to throwing away their food scraps and their trash in the same bag or the same container. So this is a whole new, new thing for the United States. Connecticut is a little bit ahead of the game. But what you do with food scraps is two things. You can compost them, or you can send them to anaerobic digestion. Those are two, you know, key things you can do. You have one anaerobic digester here in the state of Connecticut. It's in Southington. And what an anaerobic digester does with the food scraps is it's similar to your stomach when you eat. And you eat a banana, or you, you know, eat an apple, you get energy and you get calories. And that calories, those calories create energy. Same with an anaerobic digester. Any uneaten food, banana peel, from a banana peel to a coffee ground, to, you know, your meat or your bones or anything that you didn't eat or digest, any of those leftovers in the refrigerator, any of that can go into an anaerobic digester and that digests, similar to your stomach, creates calories, creates energy. In the case of quantum bio power, the energy goes off to the grid so that the food you didn't eat turns into electricity, in other words. You also get another digestate, which is sort of like the, the remaining part of what's digested comes out the other end, and it's a black matter. And that can be mixed with leaves and it creates a really nutrient-filled, so all those nutrients that were in there, those nutrients can be, go back into the soil if you mix it with leaves or yardia. So the goal for the state of Connecticut is to, you know, help be, help, help all of the municipalities to be more self-sufficient, help the municipalities to save money as the cost of disposal continues to go up as the capacity decreases. I can send around a slide to the Board of Finance that it sort of talks about those numbers. But that's the reason for the pilots. So quickly, I'll give you results of your pilot. So again, you're doing really, really great. We've got, I've got some charts that we can pass around. There's some on the front and the back. I'll let you, I'll start this way. Let you take one or, you know, share one. But basically, the first chart is this one. And you've decreased, this is one month's worth of data. Again, we've got a couple of additional weeks that look like you're in a similar trend. But you've reduced your trash year over year from last year at the same time by about 32%. Yeah, just one age, yeah. And so 32% is a really great shift in waste rate. So congratulations on that. And then, got it? So 32% decrease cumulatively year over year. And then the one on the other side looks at your overall diversion rate. So last year and for the past three years, you've averaged at a 23% recycling rate. So that's the orange number at the bottom. Today, as of the end of last month, you were at 37% recycling. So that includes the food scraps that we diverted. But also because of this push towards the food scraps, you, people have started to recycle better as well. So we're seeing better recycling numbers as well. So it's really a 63% increase in diversion overall. So this is, you're going in the right direction because obviously, as the capacity continues to decrease over the next 10 years, we want to do everything that we can to divert material from the waste stream. So that is our basic update here, not that exciting. I'm going to come back on a monthly basis, as we look at, as we move through this grant process, there's several steps. Over the next couple of months, we'll have people at the transfer station asking residents that are participating, what they think about it, how it could be improved, what we could do differently, and also asking residents that are not participating, why they're not participating, you know, what would make it easier for them, that kind of thing. So we're going to be gathering data from residents, and we're also going to be helping you all to build a long-term program, that's the goal behind the grant. So figure out a way to sustainably continue to reduce the overall generation of trash, move more materials into the recycling and the food waste, you know, digestion stream. Any questions about the program?
Thank you, it is exciting news. If this trend continues, it adds up to real money at the end of the year.
It does.
Really, it's a matter of maintaining, getting more participation.
Right, it does. And we have some good strategies on how you can do that over time, but I would say that based on the projections we have, with tipping fees going up, probably over the next 10 years, a program like this could save somewhere between $400,000 and $800,000 for a small community, for a small transfer station, that's a lot, a lot of dollars.
And it is, it seems as if it is coming, legislature is acting on proposals right now that they're going to mandate this type of thing, so.
Right.
It's good, I'm glad that we're ahead of the gap game.
Yeah, yeah, we're very excited, and again, you're number one so far, so we got to keep up the good work. And Lenore is actively helping us to do that, so. Questions, anyone else you want?
Nope, that was great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for all of your help.
See you in a month or so.
Yep, I'll see you Thursday.
Oh, right.
Thank you, Kristen.
All right, item number two on our agenda is regional, regional school. Brian, do you want to take, where's Brian still with us here?
No, but they go east, they'll say, you want to take me or do you want to? No. I'm not going to, I'm not going to take that chair.
He sits at that one.
That's right. Well, good evening, everybody. And so we just had a few handouts, Cheryl. Send them both directly. Oh, it's, it's.
Two more?
Oh, yep, they're coming around, let's see.
Oh, there's one.
We've got a couple down there.
Room for a loop, I'm like.
I know, I know. Well, good evening, everybody, and thanks for having us here, we're pleased to be here tonight, just to share a little bit about a proposed project that's going to potentially provide some significant and much needed improvements to our athletic facilities, both at middle school and high school campuses, actually, we have right here back on board, just some exhibits that show kind of some aerial view of both properties and essentially the facilities that we're recommending to our Board of Education that need to be addressed. And so we have a slide deck, I'll just kind of take you through it to give you an overview, and we're certainly happy to answer any questions that folks may have. And so this is a project that we've been talking about at the Regional Board of Education for close to three years. When I came into district as new superintendent, it was just before COVID, to kind of give you a sense of timing, there was a significant amount of feedback from the community, from town leadership, from board leadership, staff, students, parents, about the condition of our athletic fields. And so one of the things that we forgot at the end of my first year was a study to understand the condition of the fields and what they would require to bring them up to standard. Our fields are currently in a state where, just due to a significant amount of use over many, many years, they've deteriorated to the point where they require significant work and the challenge that we have in front of us, we're not looking at just a handful of these facilities, all of our fields over time have been allowed to fall into a state where there just hasn't been significant reinvestment for presumably decades. That's not to say that we don't invest in maintaining these facilities, in fact, we work very hard to do so every year, but it just comes down to the amount of use. We just don't have enough fields to not only support the needs of our athletic programs at the schools, but to support the three towns, and consequently, the fields are in a state of disrepair. And so to understand this, we actually brought in a group called BSC, they committed a study, that's on our website, that's been presented at this point multiple times over the past few years, primarily at the Regional Board of Education level, but we've had numerous public meetings, we've had various committees that have met over the past few years to unpack the recommendations from that report, and really understand how to best get after all of the work that needs to be done. The reason why we're bringing it forward this year is, it's a matter of timing. I think if you were to talk to a lot of folks that are familiar with these fields that have lived in town for a period of time, they will tell you this work should have been done over 10 years ago. One of the challenges that we've had is the cost, and we do have an opportunity this year, because we have some significant bond debt from about 15 years ago, a little bit more than 15 years ago, when we did major renovations at both Valley Regional and John Winthrop. That debt is now rolling off, and so it does create a window of opportunity for us to go out and bond, to achieve this kind of work. The projects I'm going to share with you this evening actually started out as a $16 million proposal, but we spent a lot of time and did a lot of hard work with a committee with representation from all three towns, not just Board of Ed, but town leadership, and we narrowed that number down to the current proposal, which is just under $10 million. We feel that that's a very responsible number, given the scope of work that needs to occur, and we feel that we could bond for that amount in a way that will be minimally disruptive for our budget amount for, and by extension, town budgets and so on. With that, I'll just quickly take you through the slide deck, and we can certainly talk about anything that you'd like to. So the first slide here, and I know it's just the way it's stapled, it's kind of front to back, why aren't the athletic field projects needed? So really, those four categories represent the drivers for this work, but it's also the lens through which we looked at these facilities with the BSC group, and you can see that those four major areas are equity, safety, fiscal responsibility, and community. Those themes emerged time and time again in talking with different groups of stakeholders from the towns, those are the themes that emerged through the study. We have been challenged at Valley to provide equal access to fields in terms of playing time, practice time, competition time for girls and boys sports. That's all seasons, all athletics, that's been a historical challenge for our programs in our core. From a safety perspective, and you'll see as we work through this, we have some significant safety concerns, we have had to forfeit competitions where the CIAC, which is the sort of the governing board in the state of Connecticut that oversees athletics, they've actually canceled events, where they've had officials come out for our property and say that we will not let competition happen here. And anecdotally, there's multiple examples of that over the years, where due to the conditions of the field, they've either been unsuitable for competition play, or they've just posed a flat-out safety risk to athletes, not just at our school, but from visiting schools. So safety is a significant concern, it's the main reason why we're bringing this forward. Fiscal responsibility, I talked about it, we do have a slide in here that shows the existing debt service, and if this project were to go forward as presented, what that would look like in the next few years in terms of debt service, and so we'll talk a little bit more about our strategy in terms of why this year, and how this will sort of feather in with existing bond debt that's rolling off. And then finally, community. We recognize that although the main driver here is ensuring that our athletic program at Valley is comparable to all other aspects of what we offer programmatically, but these are community fields, these are community facilities. We have incredible use of our property, literally hundreds and hundreds of events per year on all of our fields that are not school use, they're communities, and so we recognize that these resources are not just for the schools, they actually support all three of the towns that contribute to the region. The next slide here just talks a little bit about the proposed improvements to the Valley campus. Again, for folks in the audience, we have those two display boards in the background, you can see those areas highlighted on display. This is the black and white copy, but you can essentially see the areas that we would prioritize, and again, this started out as really a $16 million proposal at a committee level this fall, and this is what it now looks like at just under $10 million. And for $10 million, you can accomplish a significant amount of work to our facilities, all of which is needed. The items that you have listed here are not necessarily in priority order, it just represents kind of the list of what needs to get done. So if you look at the chart, you'll see the facility listed to the left, the primary objectives that we would seek to meet for each of those projects, and then ultimately, some of the highlights of what the projects would consist of. Obviously, there's a lot of detail behind this, but this is intended to be pretty high level, so we would look to actually replace our tracking field. What we call the competition complex or the stadium complex, it's the hill. I mean, anyone that's been to a football game or who's used that track, that's that facility right at the base of the hill as you come onto Valley's campus. Both of those facilities are in a state of repair that they require complete renovation and reconstruction. The baseball field and softball field, we would do a complete reconstruction of the infield, and that's just straight-up safety. Those fields are in very poor condition. We have a field that we refer to as the upper field, which is actually, if you've been to graduation, it's that field that sits just across from the main entrance to Valley, that's our upper field. That would be reconstructed. All of the field reconstructions, although it's not listed here in detail, would actually have drainage and irrigation work, so that's included in what's being requested. The fact that we don't have adequate drainage and very poor irrigation is a significant contributing factor to the current condition of those fields. It's not just about getting new turf, it's about ensuring that we have the ability to sustain those fields at the quality that they need to be at. Additionally, we have the practice field, which again is a lower field, it's actually in back of the competition field, and so again, if you're at that bottom of the hill competition field where the track is, it's kind of the next field moving north along the side of the high school that's sort of at the bottom of the hill. Our tennis courts, these are well beyond their life, and we've been really trying to patchwork these courts, just keeping them alive long enough to have a playable season for our student athletes. We do have some work scheduled this spring, but that is just to keep the courts safe for another year or two. They're at a point where they're failing structurally, they need to be demolished and reconstructed. And then we have a proposal for two additional fields to the very top of that slide, that's undeveloped land. Just to be frank about it, that was formerly known as the Mistlethrive property, that is a parcel of land that's under consideration. The reason why we're looking to develop that parcel is to alleviate the over-usage of the fields. If we don't expand our field surfaces and our playing surfaces, we're not going to get it to root cause. And I think the concern would be to not go forward with those fields, you're potentially investing in fields that are going to get run down very quickly. Our expectation is, with new field construction and proper maintenance, our experts have told us, we could easily expect 20 to 30 years out of these fields if they're done right and then maintained. So increasing the number of playing surfaces and circulation is a key part of that approach. So that, in a nutshell, is what we're looking to do at Valley, at John Winthrop. If you go to the next slide, you'll see we have two large soccer fields, and these are fields that are really predominantly community use, you know, while we do certainly have programmatic use at our middle school, again, anyone that's had kids go through Valley Soccer and been up there on the weekend, and that is where Valley Soccer lives, and that is the primary use of those fields, that is really a community use aspect of this plan in many ways. Both of those fields require complete reconstruction, so again, that would be new playing surfaces, new turf, irrigation, drainage, and again, primarily to address issues of safety. Within a number of these projects, because they were last constructed many years ago, there's a number of ADA issues where we're out of compliance with the Americans for Disabilities Act, and so we want to ensure that whatever work we do, we ensure good accessibility for ADA. There was a number of areas that we identified in our study that were not in compliance with. So in a nutshell, that's, that's what we're looking at, that's the number of facilities that we would seek to improve at the proposed amount. I did want to share with you a little bit around the financial aspect of this, because we have spent a lot of time talking about that, and I know that the way this thing is stapled isn't ideal, but if you can kind of flip through the packet, you'll find a slide that looks like this, and that's titled, "The Project: Projected Financial Impact in Our Four Schools." And so we recognize that the Regional Board of Education budget is the major driver for all of our local towns, and so when we started thinking about the timing and the amount to go bond, we've had a lot of ongoing dialogue with leadership from all three towns, that was important to us, we did not want to propose anything that we felt would be irresponsible from a budgeting standpoint, recognizing that the more stable the regional budget is, that's going to translate into not just stability, but predictability for the purposes of town financial planning. And so to that end, the total bonded cost that we're seeking approval for would be just under $10 million, it's $9,966,000. That assumes a 20-year repayment schedule with fixed payments, and it assumes an interest rate of 4.25%. The first payment would actually come due in '24, '25, and so if this does go forward and if it is supported by the voters at referendum, the first year that, we would start to see impact in our budget. It would not be next year, it would be '24, '25. And you can see from looking at this exhibit, which Bob Grissom put together, and Bob's our finance director, he's with us this evening, you can see where we were back in 1718, for example, with debt service. So this would actually represent a lower level of debt service than we saw historically with those larger projects. So that's what we wanted to get from you tonight, I mean, just to give you a sense of where things go from here, so we do have a large meeting tomorrow night, it'll be at John Winthrop Middle School, that's a public hearing. We've really done our best to get the word out to the communities, we've had flyers go out in the Valley paper, we've had advertisements go out through not just our various listeners at the schools in our district, but also through the town websites and the town listeners. This is going to be at 7 o'clock, it is in person. This is really an opportunity for folks in all the towns to come out and just share their views and thoughts on this proposal with the R4 Board of Education. I'll be presenting a much more in-depth presentation on this work, with a lot of the supporting detail that we've had in other presentations. Following that hearing, the R4 Board will have a special meeting where they're going to be taking into account the feedback from the hearing, coupled with all the work we've done over the past three years, and ultimately, the board will have to make a decision tomorrow night whether or not to do this forward, and if so, at what dollar value. So if the board votes tomorrow night to approve it, it will go forward to referendum on May 2nd, it'll be a second item next to the budget referendum for the Region Four Schools. So I thank you for your attention and.
I don't have the right terminology. From year to year, you have surpluses which you're allowed to put away into, I don't have the right terminology.
Capital Reserve?
Excellent.
Yes.
Are you calling upon any of that capital reserve?
So the amount of money that we have in the capital reserve would be inadequate to meet this need, which is why we're looking at a bond. And so you may recall, just a few years ago, we were really challenged because there was a deficit in that capital fund, and we had done a lot of work with the region to understand the nature of that deficit, we had done a lot of work over a few years to get that to zero. A few years ago, the board adopted into policy a capital reserve policy that is now statute-bearing. So in other words, we're in compliance with Connecticut law regarding how that reserve is managed and how much we can contribute annually to it. State law does permit regional school districts to contribute up to 2% of their total expenditure in a fiscal year into that capital reserve. We can accomplish that in one of two ways, we can do it for a budgeting process, or to your point, we do have an opportunity, if there is surplus, to apply a portion of it, if the board chooses to do so, to that capital reserve, but it cannot exceed that 2%. We would not have the ability to sort of, over time, collect the $10 million.
My question was, are you using any of that to reduce the debt load from the towns?
So, right, so now for these projects, we do have a number of projects that have earmarked for that reserve, and so some of the work we're doing that's related, we've had sort of a good year-over-year list of capital projects that the schools have identified, and we've budgeted for them, however, what we don't currently have is a true capital plan, where it's a long-range, five-to-10-year plan that would roll year-over-year with identified projects, estimated costs that we're essentially budgeting for through our capital reserve. Some of the work that we're doing this spring, in fact, with the same group that was instrumental in looking at this project in the fall, is we are going to start to develop for adoption a true long-range capital plan. So over the long haul, yes, we're just not there yet. I think the good news is, we're in a cash-positive position with the reserve, we have good policy around how that's governed and managed by the administration. We have good policy around how that's governed and managed by the administration and how we're reporting out on that reserve for the towns. And we are starting to develop some longer plans. And so I think in time, we'll have the ability to maintain our facilities, including our fields, with that reserve. But again, I think we're just in the building phase.
One quick question that may be asked tomorrow night. But again, I support this. I was on this committee 15 years ago, and we were looking to put turf fields up there. And my biggest concern is, you talked about irrigation and drainage. That's all well. But if there's no water supply, are you considering drilling new wells? Because there's a lack of water up there. That's why we've run into these problems year after year, not only overplay, but lack of water. So you can put irrigation, but you need supply. So that's my concern.
The current skating field has irrigation, but it's broken.
Correct.
So you couldn't supply water to it and get anything out of it anyway.
But those fields of John Winthrop don't have any rip.
No, no.
Again, for...
Really, nothing's been done at John Winthrop.
For years, there's been a lack of water. That's why they used to have them portable ones out there going up and down the field. So again, my concern is the water.
It's a very rough figure. We've been told approximately $30,000 is what we could expect to drill a new well to support the irrigation. I think looking at the irrigation for those two additional fields, we would be looking at a well for that location. I think we would have to, to get water out there. So sort of, that's definitely part of our thing.
The fields are unsafe. John Winthrop, if I want to go back between 20 and 25 years, less than John Winthrop fields were worked on. So there, and Valley Soccer beats them up, and it's our community, that's our youth. We need them. And as being a parent of an athlete for several years ago, and matches get canceled because of unsafe conditions, it's important. So, thank you.
My concern is that when we're saying this is for the towns or the recreational use, is that people remember that when our budget comes up and we need money in there to keep those fields going, that it's not really educational, but we're maintaining the recreational facilities for the towns. So it kind of becomes a budget issue when we're looking for more money to irrigate that field for primarily the soccer. But then everybody realizes if they want to do it, then we're being tasked with funding it. And like Brian said, that we're the major driver, so when our budget goes up, everybody feels that pain. But that's something we're being put in kind of in the middle to provide that.
It's one way of looking at it.
Right. Everything, everyone I know, including us, when we went out to build something, came in much higher than what we were expecting. Do you have a contingency in here, or is there the chance you'd come back to the towns?
No, I don't think we'd look to exceed this dollar on it. And that's really, that goes back to the conversation that, you know, has been ongoing with town leadership around what's tenable. So I would not anticipate coming back to exceed. What we do have is when you get into the actual notice around what would be on the referendum. There is language in there that allows for some flexibility. So for example, if we get into these projects and if we do find that there's overages in some area and in others, hopefully savings, we would have the ability to kind of work within this amount to try to accomplish as much as we could. That being said, I mean, that is a very real consideration. The fact of the matter is, this work would not happen in one month. You know, if this were a successful effort, if the voters approve it, you know, I think minimally, you're looking at probably two and a half years to accomplish all of this work. I think that's realistic when you consider seasonal considerations, the use of these fields and so forth. And so if this were to pass, we would have a stakeholder committee helping to sort of steer this work and drive it in terms of prioritization, construction schedule, which fields get addressed first. And we would have some ability to kind of pivot and make some decisions if we find that we can't accomplish all of this for the amount that we're just...
Do you plan to go out for one initial bond, or will you issue short-term paper, fund your projects, and turn it over to a long-term bond?
So tomorrow night, we're actually going to have our municipal advisor with us, from Phoenix Advisors. So we haven't done a lot of work with our municipal advisor. I mean, his role really comes in, assuming this passes. We've yet to talk about bonding strategy with the board. I think we feel we have really good information in terms of estimated cost. I think we know what we would ask the voters to approve, assuming this gets approved. That's really where our work begins around strategy in terms of how to best finance this project over time. So those conversations have yet to occur. But we will have our person there with us tomorrow night to answer some questions if necessary.
And legal fees are included in your nine-something, or...
So all of the fees that would be associated with the bond would be included, yeah. Yeah, so the application fees, which as you know, can be significant. I mean, it can be close to a couple hundred thousand.
It sort of took us by surprise. I'm not sure what... I have that courage today to ask you the question, but I forgot to ask it to ourselves.
Yeah. Yeah, no, we've had good counsel on that. So our attorney from shipping, who, Matt Ritter, who will also be with us tomorrow night, has shared with us, as we've been anticipating this project, that that's common practice, that because those fees can be quite high, it's quite common for schools and municipalities to roll those fees into the bond.
Just regarding the interest rate of work at 4%, of course, the interest rate will seriously impact the overall interest that we'll have to pay back. So as far as flexibility and that type of thing, what do you think? You know, what, I mean, can this, is that, that's not in stone by any means, so...
It's certainly not in stone. It's also understanding that we would be able to, over the term of 20 years, refinance for a more favorable rate down the road if that were to become an option. So I know historically, the region did use that strategy with the set of bonds they're rolling off. Those had been at one point in the past refinanced for a more favorable rate, and so I think that's something we would watch carefully.
Without penalty? I mean, as far as you have to refinance at some time during a period?
Well, in truth, I think we would have to really...
Yeah, we have to look into that.
We'd have to be a little further along to understand the terms, you know, pre-stand-in penalty or what's possible.
Right.
But again, I think that's really the role of our municipal advisor. You know, again, assuming this goes forward, we're going to have a lot of work to do just to secure the financing, you know, before we break down.
But that would make a big difference, I mean, as far as our...
Understood. Questions, observations, encouragements?
Brian, thank you. Thank you. Thanks for having us. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
The next item on our agenda with the audience of citizens. Does it have any business to come before the board, citizens?
Are we not meeting in the library for the R4?
So I'm going to take that inquiry as you do not wish to speak now.
Yeah.
All right. Tommy, it is a treasure report.
Okay, I'll try to keep it shorter. Just looking at the general fund account balances, we compare it to this month compared to last month. There's less $358,141. Again, I take that the general fund total and always will minus out the capital improvements borrow to come up with a more realistic position of where we should be. So again, $358,141, less than last month. Regarding our municipal sweep money market account, the Liberty Bank that pays 2.47%. We can't exceed 3%. So I've got to really take a look at that. I'm sure it won't get up to 3% anyway, what we'll be receiving as far as interest. But I just would like to tell you that I looked at the bank statement on just one account. It's our, that major account that we have with Liberty Bank. We keep most of our money in municipal sweep money market account. Just for the month of, between February and March, one month, one account, we earned $13,567.78 in interest. And we budgeted, we budgeted $9,000 for interest-driven. So that's certainly, that's certainly helping. Yeah, where we were last year at this time, we were at $7,903 in interest. This year, we're up to $55,926. So certainly, yeah, quite a difference. Thank you, 2.47. Our capital improvements borrow, again, that's really a holding account until dispersments. That's from a loan of $1,425,000 that we took out on June 8th of last year. So it's really a holding account until dispersments are made. And at this point, there have been two major dispersments. One last year on 8/18 for $150,000 for the progress payment made on the pumper contract fire truck. And then on 3/8 of this year, we paid out $224,979, which is the final payment dispersed on the pumper truck. When you add those two together, it comes to about 300, just under $375,000. So you can see from last month to this month, that account actually dropped, you know, $222,000 or so. We've earned interest on that account from July of '22 to March of 2023. We've earned $10,839.64 in interest. I actually touched base with Kathy, council manager, on that. I made two wire transfers this month from February 27th to 3/27. One was for $450,000 on March 6th. The second was $450,000 on 3/13 for a total of $900,000 in transfers. That was for the, from the Liberty Bank sweep account to Citizens Bank general fund account for, pretty much for accounts payables to pay. If you look at our total balances on the bottom of the page, we have $11,37,621.83. And if we take out the ARPA funds and we take out the capital improvement borrow funds, it brings our balance down to $8,937,879. And if you compare it to last month, we're down $389,259. ARPA, on the ARPA funds, we have a total of $1,315,916.78 that we had to work with, and that was based on what we received in funds plus interest that's accrued. And the first dispersment that we'd made was on February 14th to the Communications Plus LLC, and that was to benefit the Deep River Fire Department. So right now, when we subtract that amount from the ARPA funds, we're down to $1,067,114.14. And we did have that special town meeting that was held on March 13th. And so there were additional seven requests that were approved for $364,125. So if we take that amount from where we stand, where we stood on that ARPA balance, it comes down to now, when we actually pay out, none of those seven requests have been paid. So it would bring us down to $702,887 as far as a balance after those seven additional requests have been met. And our education equalization grant monies, we only have one more payment that will be coming our way. That will be at the end of April for $835,728. We, again, those monies are doled out three times a year. One in October, end of October, for a quarter of the amount. Another one in January for a quarter, and in April is one-half. And the total amount for the year, fiscal year, was $1,671,457, and that will end on June 30. And last, regarding our debt service, I'm just going to, you know, the Kirtland River Street sewer project, the next payment that will be due on that is on 6/23. The Deep River Elementary School boiler, the next payment on that will be July 29th, and that will be the final payment on that one. And then on the capital improvements borrow with Dime Bank, the next one, the next payment due is on 8/15. And on the Kirtland River Street sewer project through USDA, Department of Agriculture, the next payment will be due on 12/17. So that's pretty much it.
I assume the interest on the capital borrow is going back into the capital borrow fund?
Uh huh, yes. Yes, it is.
Tom, could I ask, there should have been a payment for the new plow truck of $200,000 out of that capital municipal sweep, or, no, out of the capital improvements borrow. So let's take, can we take a look at that tomorrow and see what...
Yeah, well, that was, let's see. Because originally, that was $1,425,000, and then we'd made those two...
Two for the fire, but there should have been another 200 for the plow.
Yeah. Yeah, because we made 150, and then 224, so that's like...
I think that's the truck.
This one?
Yeah. I think this is a plow truck, the 224.
It shouldn't have been. It should have been 200. But let's look at that with...
Yeah, because I asked Kathy that. I asked Kathy today.
Yeah.
And I asked her what, you know, what, because I noticed the difference between last month and this month.
Yeah.
And so I wanted to find out what exactly that was. And so she said it was, that's what she told me.
Yeah, no, there should have been, there should have been both of those payments. In addition to that, there should have been another 200.
Oh, okay.
But let's, let's look at that.
Okay.
And the other thing, just to make sure everybody understands, the first ARPA expenditure for the radio was not just for the, to benefit the fire department.
Well, yes, I know that. In fact, I have...
All of our emergency...
I have the invoice right here, which explains, explains everything. But it was billed to, I think, to the...
It might have been through the fire department.
That's what it was, yes. Yeah, that's, that's true. Yeah, thanks.
I wondered how you use that phrase. First payment out of ARPA was for the fire department, you said, but it's...
No, that was emergency.
That was that radio system, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, the invoice actually to Communications, well...
I think they sent the invoice to the fire department.
Yes, they did, yeah. Yes, they did. And it had a breakdown.
All right. Next item is recommendations of selectmen and actions on recommendations. Do you have any traditional recommendations, or you wish straight to go to ARPA?
Don't bet on the Husky Girls this year.
Bet on the boys.
Bet on the boys, that's right. No, let's move directly to the ARPA. At our special board of selectmen's meeting, we didn't get to it in our regular meeting. We had a special board of selectmen's meeting last week, and we moved to move to the board of finance to move a few more projects forward, hopefully. The first was, let's go, we've got some folks here from the library, so let's move with them first, if that's okay. The library had requested funds for a number of different projects. After a good discussion, and the library is here tonight to help support this request, with the, after a good discussion, after listening to the library talk to the board of selectmen a month or two ago, we had a good, a good conversation about how we could allocate funds for these requests. And what we thought to start off with was, we would, of the $119,000 request, we went to their first priority, which was for the circulation desk. That's a $35,000 cost. And then while they weren't, the next, the next priority was staffing for three years, three years of project. We thought and spoke and thought really, we would ask them to spend, to contribute another $10,000 to the library with a, with a recommendation that that go towards program extension and digital materials. I think both, and Linda can speak to what that describes, but that's what the board of finance, or the board of selectmen is moving forward to you guys to consider. And if you have any questions for Linda, she can probably speak better than I can about those requests.
Could you speak?
I will speak to you. So the circulation desk is something that we feel is very important for safety and security of the staff, as well as patron and for... for safety and security of the staff, as well as patron information. We find the way that the circulation desk is set up, that patrons come behind the desk, sometimes to grab a book or to grab a newspaper, but we have information of our patrons that can be up on our computer screen at any time. And it's also a little disconcerting having people just coming behind your workstation. So that's, that the security of that desk is really a top importance. That's a lot of priority. But also just that we lack space. When the addition was put on over twenty-five years ago, close to twenty-five years ago, we didn't have as much technology behind the desk. Now we have big monitor because we do have a new security program in place, so we need the monitor for that. We have a fax machine that we can't even keep at the desk, that we have to have in the back room because there's no space. And just the way the desk is configured, there's a lot of space that doesn't get used because it's kind of built at an angle. So if everything were more angular, I think we'd be able to accommodate those kinds of things. And it is, it's hard to go ahead and go in the back room. In fact, we do have patrons standing out there waiting to be checked out. So it would really help us, like, we feel overall staffing would be grateful to have that desk. We are looking for something that's portable because we have been talking about maybe reconfiguring some of the workspace. And Susan has looked into desks through the library, Connecticut Library Association, that would be portable. I don't know if you have had a chance to see a picture of what we were looking at initially. This is just kind of an idea, if you'd like to pass that around. That's what initially what we looked at. And again, that could be angled in different positions. It's movable. If we decide to move, you know, change the space up, that would accommodate that as well. We're probably thinking that costs of these have gone up a little bit since we first looked at it. There's also money behind the desk. We have, you know, fines and things that people like. We keep checks with the friends. So that's another concern of ours. We're not behind the desk because we're in the back room doing the fax or getting a book from the shelf. There's nobody there, and we have found patrons behind the desk.
Looking at your picture, it looks like they still have the ability to get behind the desk.
Well, I mean, that's, it depends how it's going to be angled. I mean, we could, we could fill in gaps. That, that's just acceptable.
Line the gap, correct.
So that's our number one priority. For programming, we're using more and more programming. We have several different platforms that we're using now. Kupla, Libby, and there's one more, and RV Digital. And there's also Aplon TV that patrons have access to. That's just Deep River residents. You get four things you can take out a month, but patrons would like to take out more. And we're already short, we have a shortfall already in that account this year because people just are using that more and more, the digital access. And so our, we have, in the statewide, forty percent of audio books are assessed online. So that's, that's a high number. And so we're seeing those numbers increase in Deep River as well.
Do people actually come in to do that? Or can they access?
We do it from home, using our library card.
So your recommendation, what's a dollar amount of your recommendation?
Forty-five thousand.
Forty-five for the desk and about ten for, for the program. And we figured, and I talked to Lori Grealish about this, you know, the friends have been instrumental in giving us money through their fundraising. We figured during the pandemic, we lost about ten thousand dollars in those things. Now, for the different, they had the book sales and bake sales and ornaments and psychic events, all those things that they couldn't do it during the two years, and so we lost out there.
So we felt that these were the right, the right spending for the request. We'd love to give everybody everything they ask for, but we don't have that. So this is what we thought, and we're asking you to think about it too. Next up on that list was the Deep River Social Services. We gave a lot of thought to this, I did some research on this. We had originally asked for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for that for a full-time spot for two years. I'm not, after doing some, some research, confident that sixty-five thousand dollars would cover a part-time, twenty hours a week. And that would supplement the existing service that we're providing. And after those two years go, I think we'll be looking at, we may in fact, to extend a little bit beyond what we are, what we're offering now. But we don't, I don't think we need, we're going to need twenty hours or twenty-six hours a week after that. So we're asking for sixty-five thousand to cover this for the two years and to get us to where we can make a decision, hopefully be through the COVID repercussions and just working on our normal process. And then we can evaluate that after those two years. So that's a reduction of the hundred and thirty thousand dollar original request to a sixty-five thousand dollar request to bring to the town.
What was the driving force item that moved you from one thirty to one sixty?
Basically, the, the amount of hours that are, we think will be necessary. When this was originally conceived, I felt pretty strongly that people needed a full-time person over there. After looking at where we are, I don't think that that's really necessary. And, and I don't think that it was, that we're gonna, we're gonna note, we're gonna see. We will continue to see continued demand on the office, but I think that's going to diminish over the time. We're seeing a little bit now, but slowing down a little bit. So I think we're gonna be okay. And it's a good, I think it's a very good way for us to move into really being able to evaluate what we need. What we're offering now is not enough, I don't think it was enough. But this may be a little more, so we'll find that sweet spot.
We have two part-time.
We will have two part-time people over there. Rosie's there now, not looking to remove her or replace her right now. But she's been here a long time, and I think in a couple of years, she may be considering moving. It might also be a way to get someone into our, into our program, knowing and learning our program so that in a couple of years, they can maybe step.
Gordon Finanz, any questions, thoughts?
I think one of the, one of the points in our discussion is, it's always seems when it comes to personnel, the recurring question is, well, what happens at the end of that period? Is it going to be another line item thing? And if I recall correctly in our discussion, this, this is something that is a need now because of pandemic-related things. And in two years, that demand hopefully will be less. And that's one of those that might not have to be added into a yearly budget request or whatever to continue beyond this, this request.
My anticipation is that the twenty hours will not be, will hopefully not be necessary. But we will in fact need more than what we are offering now, which is six plus a couple of years. So I think it's a good way for us to get through where we are. And at the end of it, we will not need two people over there. We'll need one person for maybe fifteen. So I expect that at the end of this, there will be an increase. Or if I have any say, there probably will be an increase because six hours is not enough for our town. But I don't think we're going to need twenty-six at the end of these two years either. And, you know, if we find halfway through this that we don't need it, we don't need it. But I think, I'm very confident that we will. I know we do right now.
Angus, what population does this serve? Tri-Town, TCT kids?
Serves Deep River, families.
I know it's Deep River, but I mean, is it the adult population? Is it kids, is it families?
It's all, they work with Tri-Town on the family situations, with children and things that Tri-Town can handle better. But this is mostly a connection between what the, what the community members that need social services connects them from, from Deep River, which does not provide a lot of social services, to state and federal agencies that can in fact help. That's mostly what the function is.
And currently, we only offer six hours of help?
Yep. But it also, you know, it's helping people get involved in job searches and other things besides just getting help. It's helping them get themselves back into.
I assume there's a financial component to it. It's helping them find financial resources, like healthcare, things like that. That's usually what social workers do. So if you don't have insurance or you lost your job and need to find services in the state to help out.
We had a great program, or event over there. Right before COVID, the state has a bus that has got a bunch of computers on it and connects to the internet. And people were coming in, and we had people over there that were, people would stop and say, I need help with this. We'd get them on the computer right there, signed up right there. It was a really good event. And those are the things that we wanted to do more of. But then COVID hit, and I hope that we're able to start doing them again.
So two, did you say two requests?
No, that's, that's where we are right now. The next is the Deep River Fire Department. This was a really big request for a number of things. This, this we thought was very important to get this moved forward now because it can, it can in fact and will have a major impact on our next year's budget. And that was a request. Let me just get to the paperwork, sorry. They had requested, and in our budget right now is SCBA breathing apparatus replacement. And there was also a structural fighter fighting gear. Those two things added up to a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Sixty for SCBA, fifty-five for firefighting gear. And after a long conversation, there were also requests for battery tools, electronic docks for, electronic door locking, extrication tools, and bailout sets, which are equipment that firemen bring into a house. And if they get trapped upstairs, they can attach it to the house and throw it out the window and be able to escape the house. So we had a long conversation about what we could do. We felt very strongly that the SCBA and the turnout gear would, would take a hundred thousand dollars out of our, a hundred and ten thousand dollars out of our budget for capital expenditures this year. We thought that was an important opportunity for us. And then we put another twenty-five thousand in for bailout sets because that, that has to do with the, with the fireman's safety. And another fifteen thousand to be used at the fire department's discretion amongst the requested items here. And that, that's for a total of a hundred and fifty thousand dollar request.
So they're originally on two eighteen, and you're dropping it to one fifty?
One fifty, yes. And the last is something that we've already spoken about, but we would like to move it to town meeting, is the Deep River Parks and Recreation request for seventy-five thousand dollars for a music and arts festival. So really, the only new requests are social services, public library, and the Deep River Fire Department. Any questions on any of those, any thoughts on any of those?
Just quick math, that leaves us about a half a million little left. Five fifty-seven, am I doing that right?
I think it's closer to joist and numbers. I think it's three hundred, if it's all over. It leaves us with three hundred and thirty-one.
So would the plan be to take, have another town meeting for just these items? And then?
And we'll continue to move forward, yeah.
Angus, one question I have is for the fire department. The one thirty-five, and then there's an additional fifteen thousand for what?
To be used at their discretion for some of these. We couldn't choose and didn't think we should be choosing between the PBB Milwaukee Super Vac eighteen-inch or the battery tools, or even the electronic doors for the stations. Those were things that, you know, I think that they can prioritize them better than we can. The electronic doors, I think, would be a really good thing for them. But maybe they, maybe they need the extrication, extrication tools more than that. I don't know their priorities. But we would ask them to stay within the requested items here, not just a fifteen thousand for them.
Just a question regarding the seventy-five thousand dollars for the music and arts festival. That falls within the ARPA?
Yeah, yep, very much.
The, well, some of the older members, Pamela, that's you and me. We discussed that.
That was not quite a year, but it was a long, it was a long time ago. We had that conversation and moved it forward.
The music festival? That was February twenty-second.
There you go. So yeah, it's over here.
And that's for one event, or is that?
No, no, that's for multiple events that hopefully will grow into something that doesn't need public funding, but will become a self-sustaining event. It's pretty exciting, and we will ask Parks and Rec to come.
Yeah, it comes under.
Funds for multiple years?
Yeah.
And multiple events around?
Around the town. What I like about it most is it really is a town-wide festival. It's not just a, a big concert up at Devon Field or at Flatland or something like that. It's concert on the green, concerts in the, in the different restaurants and facilities, dance, dance, hopefully some dance things on the green again. Hopefully, maybe an art show at the Historical Society, something really to bring in, bring in a real arts and music festival here in town for the, for a weekend.
And you are putting that under your broad category of town development.
You saw in your minutes that you pulled out the river cog money?
Yes.
You're not going to go for it?
Yeah, no. Pardon?
You guys didn't make a motion.
We didn't formally, we just talked about it. It's coming out of my recommendations to the Board of Selectmen after reviewing other cogs in other towns around, around the community and around the state.
Gordon Finanz would say you wish to send these on to a town meeting. Do you have any thoughts on town meetings? Since we're talking about town meetings, I assume it will be like the last one, except we, it is some thought that you will have the actual.
We're gonna ask, well, we have the actual people there. I think we'll give everybody a spot after my brief overview and we get into motions, when a motion comes up, the, the person can get up and give a better presentation than I can for what their request is for.
Do you remember what art festival was asking, how much?
They were asking for seventy-five thousand.
Which will remain, we will move that from ARPA into town funds and into capital, I assume, right?
No, that, well, that's a good, that's a good question, yes. I would expect that we will set up an account with inside, you know, a log inside the capital for the.
All right, Gordon Finanz, this is it. Can I hear a motion? Would anyone be willing to, the, start with the library, move to the town, a request for to fund the library of, what'd you say, forty-five or fifty?
Forty-five thousand.
Forty-five thousand.
So move second?
Definitely. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Gordon Finanz, the second item we will work with, Angus, is the, I've lost track.
Social services.
Social services, sixty-five thousand dollars. Moving sixty-five thousand dollars towards social service. Same question, how we fund it. Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm hearing ayes. Am I missing any nay or something? Third item would be?
Fire Department.
Oh, Fire Department, that's third item. Oh, that's right.
Hundred fifty thousand.
Hundred fifteen, hundred and fifty thousand. All those in favor of taking?
Any motion?
Any motion?
Well, all those in favor of giving the motion. Move my idea for a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And finally, the?
Park and Rec. Oh, no, that's already done.
We just have to get it to the meeting, so.
Park and Rec, the, what are you going to? Park and Rec, the, what are you going to, festival, Deep River Festival?
Arts and Music Festival.
Arts and Music Festival, seventy-five thousand dollars, okay. I need any motion?
Someone.
Don't move, if you don't want.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Who seconded?
Mike. One of us.
And make sure you all get a copy of Joyce's new invention of how we're keeping track of this. It's a, it's really a good, good document.
Joyce, will you email it up to us?
Can you put that up on the internet in some way so that we can minimize?
Yep.
Are you making available valid or?
Can I ask if there's anything you've taken off this list yet or that you've talked about?
Well, not that we voted to take off a bit, but we have, I'm fairly confident that the uh the cog request for ninety-five thousand will come out. Um, I, we didn't vote on it, but we have uh two requests for um really basically capital expenditures for a couple of nonprofits in town, but we have two hundred thousand dollars that will probably move forward shortly that is set aside for small businesses, nonprofit relief. And I think we're gonna probably remove those, or not remove, but move those requests into that two hundred thousand. So that would free up another eighty-five thousand. We have a revised request for middlesex behavioral, behavioral health that's gone from fifteen to ten, so we'll talk about that. The astuary, I'm going to probably recommend that we move that from seventy-five thousand to two thousand to be more in line with some of our neighboring towns.
What about wood chippers and generators?
Wood chippers and generators, I think, are still pretty important for us. Yeah.
Well, you just spent another million dollars, right?
Well, that's the idea, hopefully without going through COVID. Um, yeah, yeah.
Have you seen?
And there are other, there are other requests. I'm working with, with other groups um to, to bring in some, some more art um and development of some of the community effort that, that the, or community benefits that are, that a good art project can bring into its community.
Do you expect those to have a request to go to?
I, I will, I will bring a request to the Board of Selectmen to the town for that. I just need to, we're working on it now as to what we can do. Besides, you know, something different from a festival, some permanent installations and things like that.
So if all this gets approved at a town meeting, then we're left, the ARPA funds have three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars left to disperse?
I believe that that's correct, yeah.
And how many more requests out there that come out of that?
Seven hundred thousand.
Seven hundred thousand left?
Yep.
Oh, who said three thirty-one?
Oh, there's three hundred thousand left.
Thirty-one thousand left.
That's what I said.
We have seven hundred thousand dollars requests.
Still left out of the three hundred and?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yep.
And these monies have to be dispersed by when?
Twenty-twenty-six.
Get that money machine.
They have to be committed, committed by the end of next year, but dispersed by twenty-twenty-six.
Do you have an expected timeframe? You didn't say no.
Expect the timeframe? No, I'd like to continue moving these um.
Certainly, the fire department is important to do because it overlays our budget. The others don't necessarily affect the budget, certainly fire department.
No, I think the other requests on this will not affect this budget, but I'm confident that the library will come back. If it's not successful at the town meeting, will come back for a request for, at the very least, for that circulation test. And there are, there were some legitimate requests in there. Some of these program extensions are necessary to keep that a good modern library and to satisfy the demand on that library. And we have some, some good information. That, that library does a heck of a lot more than lots surrounding libraries. It's a good library. It's a good, and it's a good part of our town.
Certainly, the changes they're, what they deliver from the days when it was just books they're taking out. All right, um, Selectmen, any other recommendations?
Recommendations, no.
Pretty good recommendations.
Not, not right now.
For the finance, we, we were sent both the revenues and the expenses. I'm tempted to give an overview that uh.
Could tell, tell them something?
What's that?
Who sent them out?
Are you suggesting you didn't, yes?
Is there an extra copy around? I printed mine out and left it on my table at home and I didn't bring my iPad. Thanks.
This is what the ninth month suggesting for is my uh, my rule of thumb, which has weaknesses in it. Um, we have spent about seventy-five percent of our funds and about twenty-five percent are left. If you were to use that rule of thumb, which falls apart quickly, and you were to look at the bottom line, total line percent left of each of our accounts, you will see that we are we are comfortably above in almost every line item, every total line, the twenty-five percent. There's a couple areas that sort of jump out. Certainly Angus's uh engineering fee, but we've been chatting about that. Elections, elections have adequate funding except in the printing expense. So I believe that you probably go over that. I'm leaning towards they will not go over the total funds. We are tight in fuel, which we've talked about every month Angus. I assume that you would agree that we're tight in fuel.
We are tight in fuel, but I think we are through our demanding months. I think the, most of the pressure on that, it will be, uh, be in better shape.
But again, in total for that, I don't know, we seem to be okay. I don't, let's see, nothing else. Again, I'm using my twenty-five percent left as a criteria to chat about.
You know, water, I think we will be okay. We'll, you know, if we go just go down through the line, but there's no reason to do that.
When do you begin to, that, that is watering fields and that type of thing, correct? So when do you begin to water?
Well, we just turn the parks on, the water in the parks on. Because they're gonna start being used by different, different groups.
Well, when you say used, you mean go to the water fountain or to actually water the green?
No, we won't start watering the lawn probably until the end of May. Depends on what the weather is.
So again, I think that would be one month, but one, maybe two.
Yeah, but that doesn't, this is not just for fields. This is water in the buildings, all, all of the public buildings.
But I, okay, I'm gonna, I thought that's where the major use, but it seems to be okay. Again, anyone should bring something out. I don't have, I see nothing that is particularly.
That's right, we didn't have anything in this book.
And I actually see the potential that we may not spend everything, but we will at the moment make the assumption that everything continues to be spent on a straight line basis, which is my twenty-five percent. So I offer no relief, although I went through it the other day. I found a few things I don't think we'll spend. Angus and I need to look at, so, but I think we'll find on expenses, if anything we've got to.
I don't know why.
Surplus. Anyone, does anyone have any questions? Anyone looking up? Let's talk about capital for a moment. Spring is a busy capital time, yeah?
Yes.
You are not sure you're going to go forward with the road, the transfer station?
Transfer station will not be spent.
Will not be spent?
Not this fall.
There's one ones I was grabbing.
Outside around now.
Your oil containment program will.
That will be spent, yeah. That, that, that's, we need to do that.
Now, the fire department stations, I'm assuming they're going to spend that, right?
It has been spent. I don't know why it's on.
Oh, all right, it's all spent. And breathing apparatus is gone, so, okay.
Yep. Losip um will be spent. And Reval, we know that's gonna go right into the capital.
Are you gonna pull down the, your grant, your Losip grant?
Yeah.
Okay, and you're gonna do the?
Well, we're gonna do the sprinkler system at the lot, at the green and uh, and the state just.
Oh, you're thinking as you will bring it down, put it into capital account and get to it later.
And they, the state just opened up or added to what you can use Losip for. And uh, that with addition was dead tree, dead and dying trees along the public properties. And I think you've, you've noticed we've already exceeded what we are. I think I'm gonna take some of that money and try to catch up a little bit on some of that.
What do you do? Wait for a tree to fall or do you send people out anticipating?
We do our best to make sure the trees are down before they fall.
Assume you can always be taken by someone.
We've been very lucky. You know, this, this year was not a particularly heavily, heavy wind year. But over the course of the past five years, we've had some pretty big storms and, and we have we've done a good job getting, staying on top of, on top of our trees, not have a whole lot of them fall into the public during these storms.
I think it's just curiosity.
Don't you, uh, there is a certain, explain to me. Actually, you've explained to me. From the middle of the road in, onto somebody's property, there is a, there is a distance that town is responsible for. But you sometimes have to go further, don't you?
Yes, yeah. If, if there's something that's dead and dying, it's, it's over, hanging over the, on public property, we have to go and clear that. Or if it, if it's something that is dead and it looks like it's going to fall into the public property, we can work with the property owner and kind of share that cost.
Do you find people willing to have you take trees down?
Yeah, more often people are asking. Carmella?
What's the determinant that says cut this tree down?
If it's dead or dying.
How do they, how do they know? Do they go up and cut a piece of it off to see if it's rotten inside or what do they do?
It's pretty simple to see a really dead tree. Especially right now when like the ash trees are not just dying slowly. They're dying.
Those who watch the park falling off of them?
Yep. Um, and then oak trees got hit two years ago and last year again with drought. Uh, maple trees, all the hardwoods are really suffering a little bit. Um, but you know, the winter time, it's hard to tell because there's not a lot of leaves, right? For you and me, it's hard to tell, but for arborists, and we have a, we have a, a tree ward and we have an arborist who works with the town. And we try to, we have a list, a running list, an active list that, that is established and prioritized by the, the health of the trees. And we get through them as quickly as we can, as much money as we have, knowing that you're dead, so we don't have to go out and look now. But if a tree dies now, then we go, we have to go out and get it if something happens. We get it. We, we don't have to sample the tree. You go, you send the specialists out and they tell you that tree is dead and it needs to go.
Just so when I'm riding to work, it's like there are some trees that look like, I hope I get under this before it decides to fall.
Yeah, oh, down River Road?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've been pretty aggressive down there this year. Uh, but uh, you know, if you see something, let us know.
Say something.
Say something.
Say something.
If it's, if it's not on the list, we'll get it on the list. We'll look at it and see if it needs to get on the list. Like I say, for um, for you and me and those of us that don't, that are not, have not studied that, it's difficult to tell this time of year, but we'll be able to tell them by the end of the month because we'll have some leaves on it. Or not.
Thanks.
All right, let's run over to, run over, let's slowly go over to revenues. And if you, if you look at the top, which is, we are virtually right on budget for the property taxes. I think there's what, eighty-nine, ninety thousand. Uh, I'm fairly confident that will come in. If you remember, for your new folks, um, we assume that we will collect ninety-eight percent of our billed revenues. That's what this number is, ninety-eight. Uh, sometimes we get a little bit, in actuality, sometimes it comes in greater, but I'm very confident we'll get it, but we're still sure. Uh, take a glance down there at the uh fees, what is it? We budgeted for what am I trying, oh, accrue, uh, property taxes accrued. Those who have not paid just in the past, we've collected, we budgeted a hundred and twenty and two hundred and sixty has come in, a hundred and forty more than budget. Which I, I tried to get an answer tonight at home, but how much of that is, we sold, I forget how many.
Sold a handful of properties.
That's, that's a good phrase, a handful of properties, and I think a substantial, as is the interest. And if you glance at motor vehicle supplements, we've been holding that at a hundred and twenty. It came in a hundred and thirty-two, so I believe there is a, I believe we will see a comfortable revenue collection. Angus and I have to talk about that a little bit more, but I do believe we'll see an ample collection there, which when we get together in our workshop, we'll have to make some assertion whether we wish to build in a, an assumption that we have aggressive revenues and, and spend less and include that into our surplus, but we will talk about it there. Any questions on revenue or expenses? I do believe we're fine. And that?
I think we're in good shape. And as Tom said earlier, indicated earlier, the uh, the interest on our accounts is gonna, is gonna really be a big surprise for our surpluses.
And the uh, the graph budget that I sent out the other day, Angus and I changed. We were, we went from nine to forty, but looking at the fifty-five that Tom has uh put in there, I think we put.
I think we could get a little more risk than that, yeah. Cause I, I don't think those are coming down anytime soon.
I do not either. I think they just raised it in the fourth quarter, so I think we'll be there for at least for the budget year.
Yeah.
Uh, that, what's this to other business? Anything, anyone who'd like to chat about any other business?
Oh, sure. No, that's a good idea. I, I didn't, this is not a recommendation, but um, we, you'll see this in our workshop. And we're talking about revenues in particular for lots of expenditures. We, the Board of Selectmen moved the Town of Chester has a, we have a contract with the Town of Chester that they can utilize portions of our bulked waste collection at the transfer station. Part of that contract allows for them to bring brush as long as we're able to burn the brush. Well, we haven't been able to burn the brush for thirty-odd years. While that's spent.
Still brought.
But it's still in the contract. So for one reason or another, uh, Chester residents have continued to, to try to utilize the brush pile over in, at the transfer station. Couple of years ago, we started to enforce that rigorously. This year, we got very strict with it and made sure that every Town of Chester was aware. The first selectwoman in Chester has asked me very nicely if we could revise our contract and allow Chester to bring brush back here. They have, Chester residents have nowhere to bring their brush. Since, since it's part of the contract already, I'm not a hundred percent certain that we need to bring it to town meeting, but I think we should bring it to town meeting. So we've moved, we revised the contract to allow them to bring brush. And they will pay for additional, any additional chipping that needs to take place, and I expect that's going to double. So we spent thirty, they're gonna, right now, they're gonna pay thirty. Whatever the contract is, they're going to pay for two additional chippings. Plus a ser, a percentage of that which goes into servicing and maintaining the area. So we anticipate that's about five thousand dollars. So we're moved to the town meeting, probably the same meeting that we had the ARPA to um, discussion, to uh, to revise the contract to allow for Chester to bring their chip wood, wood, their brush into our brush pile. They will pay for any additional chipping, including any overage if there's a case of a bad storm that comes through and a lot of brush comes down. If there's additional chipping need, they will share the cost of that.
Now, we have included into the budget revenues an additional thirty for Chester. Are you suggesting that may go a little bit higher?
It might go a little bit higher.
Okay.
Um, but expenditures, that will be, expenditure will go up right with it, so.
Now, you, but you and I included on Sunday an additional twenty thousand for chipping, assuming that Chester will be using. Are you suggesting that may go higher as well, higher as well or?
Well, it will cost us, it will cost us at least thirty thousand.
Oh, really?
Because that's what the chipping costs. We have the contract with the chipper. So our chipping costs fifteen thousand dollars per event. We're gonna, we have two year, two events a year. I expect that there will be two more events a year because of uh Chester coming over, so that will go, our expenditures and our revenues will both go up to sixty. I think our revenues will go a little bit higher because we need to spend some money, additional manpower managing and maintaining that chip pile.
Chip pile, otherwise, all the way, way down the bottom, right? I have seen Chester folks up on the top of the hill.
Well, they have to go up on the top of the hill, should say that this is where we're bringing it and get permission to go down there and then hopefully.
Different hill, different hill. Uh, what used to be the, the hole in the ground, uh, seen them up there. Leaves, they put leaves there.
Chester?
That is not a, that's sort of the global accusation. I have seen people up there with a truck. It was, it's a commercial truck that says they do, they live in Chester, so it's mine, so I've seen it.
Well, if our men are doing their job properly, they're getting documentation that those of these came from a property in Chester, in Deep River.
In my department, okay.
So if we buy that hundred thousand dollar chipper, does that change anything?
No, no, this is a, this is a gigantic machine that has, you know, it's a big operation to bring in.
Oh, okay.
The wood chipper, the wood chipper that we're requesting is a chipper that. The wood chipper, the wood chipper that we're requesting is a chipper that we can take around town.
Against totally.
In particular, in particular during storms and, and emergency events when we need to get trees out of the roads.
And do we have one now?
No, we don't have.
Okay.
And then the trees that we chatted about a moment ago, you contract that to a town, right? They have chipper, but they.
They do have chipper.
It's on our town.
And oftentimes during the storm, we're able to, to rent the chipper from them.
Oh, okay.
But we are renting chipper and oftentimes.
They're going to be very expensive.
Events, they're very busy and we end up not having chipper when we've got lumber along the side of the road for, for weeks trying to get, get a chipper.
It's no minor piece of equipment to work.
It is not a minor piece of.
Know what you're doing. Again, any other business, if that is a good, any other business, anybody else have any other business, okay? All that's good, so does anyone wish to make a motion to a chairman?
Some move?
Some move, I got a one, got a two. All in favor of a chairman?